Stapler from home. Because there was a lack of a stapler. But I have plenty of staplers and a lack of a...
Was it a special red stapler?
Not your first radio hangover.
Yeah, I mean it's...
Swing on it.
I do more with... Oh, and we've ordered more legal pads.
Let's call the meeting to order. We're all present this evening. Item two. At the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session, the agenda of August the 15th, 2017. Anybody? Derwin, how about you?
Mayor, I do have one that I've mentioned to you before the meeting. On 9.4, on the Main Street contract, it's come to our attention very recently that in Section 2E, it talks about Main Street conducting First Fridays monthly. But we don't do them monthly. I think we do them from April to November. So we probably want to make that correction upstairs before you approve it.
It doesn't change anything, does it?
No, it's just defined with...
Just for housekeeping?
Yeah.
We just... And you suggested that we just don't... There's two little phrases that we have taken off.
Yes, maybe we just say "conduct" or "support" First Friday events.
Yeah.
And whenever they have them...
Yeah.
Do we need to approve that or discuss that?
Upstairs you will. It's part of the Main Street contract, an item 9.4.
Okay.
And Main Street is the one that does the First Fridays.
Yeah.
So maybe that was old contract language, I don't know. Because I think Kelly just told me that they used to do it monthly and it didn't work. Because people don't come out when it's called, right?
Yeah.
9.4, a percent item?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Pull it up. Then we can do that. Just pull it up.
That's your job.
I can do that.
Anything else?
Make it less specific.
Item three. Present the Call Lake Phase Two Quarterly Update. Chris?
Thank you, sir.
Michael? Welcome back.
Thank you. Okay. We're here again to give you an update on what we've done in progress-wise with Phase Two of this program. The things that we'll talk about is we'll share with you the updates on the infrastructure, the program management side of it, the environmental, and then we'll talk a little bit about schedule. Michael?
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you again. I think it was May, the last time we updated the program status. Real quickly, just kind of some big-picture items for you to consider. Good progress overall on all the major infrastructure components relative to their preliminary design reports and 30% design. Geotechnical investigations for the program as a whole, this is geotechnical boring, this is characterizing the soils where a lot of the infrastructure will be built, is about 50% complete to date. The environmental, or NEPA, process is continuing, that will be ongoing. It's about a two-year process. And obviously, multiple areas of activity with program controls, administration, and reporting, some of which results in the monthly report that the Commission receives, kind of rolling up the status of the program. Real quickly, a brief update on each of the major infrastructure pieces. At the intake facility, to be located at Call Lake, we have finally received a right-of-entry permit to perform the land-side and marine-side geotechnical investigations. That right-of-entry was required as a result of working on federal property. That geotechnical work is scheduled to begin the week of August 28th. We are currently revising the draft preliminary design report based on the feedback that we received from your staff after their review of that preliminary design report. And we have generated some intake preliminary design layouts or floor plans for the structure that will be out there, also based on feedback from your staff. With regard to the pipeline, we've had continued coordination with major utility owners along the route. That will also be an ongoing process as we access more property identified, utility crossings. That includes things like oil and gas. And that could be oil and gas, or it could be water or wastewater. Wind, electric, communications, and so forth. To date, there are what we're classifying as 24 different major utility contacts associated with the pipeline project. Very glad to report that we have completed all but 5% of the pedestrian surveys. This is actually getting onsite and walking the alignment itself. There's still just a little piece remaining for the pedestrian component. And that little piece that still remains are only those areas that are still lacking private property permission to access their property. And we're still working on that, with great help from your staff. On the pipeline itself, with regard to geotech, we have completed 52 of the 149 geotechnical borings. That will continue. Hopefully, we'll be able to complete all of those soon as a result of getting permission back from those remaining landowners.
Just out of curiosity, when we encounter other utility pipes or cables or whatever, is the plan to put our water line underneath it, or does it go over, or does it change in time to tackle?
To overgeneralize it, it's to avoid it, to try to avoid it in some manner. Under, around, rarely do we have to go over. It's typically a bore or directional drill underneath the existing utility.
As big as our pipe is, that's a pretty good-sized bore, isn't it?
It could be, yeah.
Is that two borings per mile?
For road crossings? Some of the...
You've got 149 borings and...
Those borings are vertical borings, just going directly into the soil to characterize the underground conditions so that we can design the pipe bedding. The directional drilling that I'm talking about is where we would have a utility line that we directional drill four underneath that. Just a graphical representation of the work that's been completed from a pedestrian survey standpoint. I presented this in May, and it's been updated to include that the western section's 100% complete, central section's now 100% complete, and the eastern section is just lacking that last 5%. With regard to the terminal storage reservoirs, we have completed the equalization basin geotechnical investigations. That's the storage reservoir that'll be located on the new water treatment plant site. In addition, that equalization basin's preliminary grading design is ongoing. Also very glad to report that we're narrowing down on a site selection for the emergency storage reservoir. That's the larger of the two reservoirs. That'll be located a little further east of town. And currently completing four additional technical memorandums to collect additional feedback from the city staff on items that relate to the equalization storage basin. Things like algae control, liners in that basin, erosion control, and then ensuring that we meet the drainage requirements that are required inside the city limits for the construction of this reservoir. With regard to the water treatment plant, we have completed all the geotechnical investigations. Every month, there are several design information memorandums that are issued to city staff, and there have been several, close to a dozen. The most recent ones that were delivered included design information on the chemical feed facilities, as well as the administration, operations, and maintenance facilities that are located at the site. We have updated the preliminary process layouts and produced a draft site layout. This is kind of how will all of these treatment processes fit together on the property that's designated for the water treatment plant. Other recent technical memos that the city staff has been reviewing include the granular-activated carbon pump station, design information memo, and the residuals handling memo. I'll take a quick tour of some of the graphics that we have developed to date, and these are very preliminary, but we've got to start thinking about how things are going to look on this site, how things are going to be laid out. And so these will change a little bit, and they will improve in their quality as we move through the program. I hope to bring you an actual video at some point where we can fly through the 3D renderings that are developed both interior and exterior for the water treatment plant to give you a feel for what the treatment plant will look like when it's completed. This is looking south, across Chestnut here. You can see the equalization terminal storage reservoirs on the south side of the property. The residuals handling, solids handling, is also located on the south side of the property, furthest away from public view, public access on Chestnut. These facilities here include chemical feed facilities, ozone treatment facilities, multimedia filtration facilities, granular-activated carbon treatment facilities. And these facilities here are sedimentation tanks where the clarification or the removal of the turbidifier solids occurs once the water first comes into the treatment plant. Right here, the smallest of the structures, that's represented on this rendering, is the operations, administration, and maintenance offices.
Are the materials that you bring granular or liquid?
The solids material?
What you mix with the water?
The chemicals. The chemicals themselves are liquid, bulk liquid chemicals.
Trucked in or piped in?
Trucked in. Yes, yes, Mayor. Trucked in with traffic routes off of... Is that wheat? It is Wheat Ridge. Trucked in from Wheat Ridge, big circle loop through the facility. The chemicals are all stored under one roof in separate buildings under that one roof. There's some compatibility issues that we have to be aware of with those chemicals. But yes, we are converting to liquid chemicals.
So this is located between Garland and Wheat Ridge?
Garland would be over here. Yeah. So, yeah, so this is your existing plant right here. That's out there on Chestnut now. The pump station and... Ground storage tank.
Just due west of OBA.
That's correct. Due west of OBA. And this is... And that ground storage tank is intended to be utilized as part of this program. So we're revitalizing that existing infrastructure that you guys have fought and paid for and utilizing it within the new plant.
Is that an ocean behind?
Well, I wish it was a lake.
Looks like one.
I wish it was... Don't you wish it was water supply? I thought the same thing, Mayor. Just looking back to the east on Chestnut, we better get through these pretty quick. That's just kind of looking at the front of the facility, security fencing.
Michael, please don't hurry.
Okay, all right. Security fencing, a little bit more decorative fencing. Now, the finishes on all these buildings have yet to be determined. This is just a first draft to kind of give you an idea of how things are going to sit at the site itself. Now, this is traveling west on Chestnut, looking over at the facility. This is a close-up of that operations, administration, maintenance facility. Not necessarily the final rendering yet, just an idea. We jump inside there. Again, this is still a work in progress. We have a main entry here into an entryway. We have a laboratory facility, we have a control room, office space, meeting rooms, kitchen area, break room, men's and women's locker rooms. Up here front, we have preliminarily planned a meeting space with some restrooms if there were training opportunities where operators from other communities might come in and train at your facility and so forth.
Is Gdansky going to have an office out there?
That's above my pay grade.
No, sir, this is for operations. Not engineering.
People know what they're doing, huh?
Yeah, exactly.
So the intent here that we're working through is, you know, this is a public accessible area. This, from here back, is a secure area where the public would only be hand-carried through the operation facility. But you can see here, there's glass walls on the control room, and this is glass wall on the laboratory. So that in the event the public did come in and have some type of training activity or visit, they could see the command center, the control room, with flat-screen TVs on the wall, and all the workings that go on from a computerized standpoint, the supervisory control and data acquisition systems. And they could also see people in lab coats running tests on their water quality and so forth. So that's kind of the general concept up front. But everything beyond this barrier here would be a secure environment. And that just gives you a little bit better look at the control room here and the laboratory here.
I would hope you have a secure environment up in the door.
Well, you'll have a secure environment at the gate as well. So you'll require notification of who you are and if you have a reason to be there before you're allowed in the parking lot. And then once you come in here, if your business is in the treatment plant, that's a different level of security than in that public space.
Will some of the municipalities that want to buy water from us come here to train?
They sure could. Yes, they absolutely could. You could host that. You could host stuff that doesn't even relate to water treatment if you wanted to. I mean, there's a lot of opportunities with that public space. So that's kind of the front area. This is kind of the kitchen area with restrooms and lockers and so forth. And we'll show you more of that as it progresses. Just kind of wanted to whet the appetite a little bit. So once we treat the water, we have to distribute it to the community. Distribution, infrastructure update includes completion of the optimization study. This was a study to determine the appropriate size pipe that leaves the water plant and ties into your system. We've just about settled on a 36-inch transmission line as the optimal size pipe. We've completed the high-service pump station geotechnical investigations. And then city staff is currently reviewing a couple of memos that'll be forthcoming on the transmission main alignment, and then their opportunity to comment on that pipeline optimization study that was done as well. So that completes the infrastructure update. Let's transition to the environmental process update. Two tracks are running on the environmental, biological studies and cultural resource studies that have to be evaluated. This table reflects the percent complete for each major infrastructure piece with regard to the environmental work. And you see that pretty much everything is done on the major components with the exception of the private property access that's required to finish up the biological and cultural resource studies on the pipeline. The intermediate booster pump station site was... is still being defined. I think we're getting really close on that. So that work has not begun yet. And the terminal storage, the emergency storage component for the terminal storage reservoirs, the site for yet... it has not quite yet been defined as well. So, you know, it's difficult to go out and predict where those are going to be, do the environmental work, and then have to back up and say, "Well, we did it in the wrong spot." So that's kind of part of that is having relatively significant impact on schedule, but it is also preserving budget and preventing some rework from an environmental standpoint.
Going back to that one just a moment there, I think I understand what biological studies are, but what are the cultural studies?
Archaeological, Native American, sensitive areas that have resulted in preservation of cultural resources that we want to try to avoid. Historical sites that are registered, burial grounds.
How many tribal grounds do we cross?
A lot. I don't have the exact number of tribal parcels handy, but I could show you a map that indicates a lot in this region right here.
Yeah.
Lot of acres or miles or...
Well, those are tribal jurisdictional boundaries. Actual tribal parcels are somewhat smaller than the overall jurisdictional boundaries. But it's still, like any other private property owner, requires access and their permission for us to get on their property.
I only see a three or four tribal lands on there.
Yes.
About the parcels?
That's 20 miles, though, just that eastern part.
Yes.
21 miles. So a lot. It's a third of it.
But it's not like we didn't expect this. We knew this going into...
Exactly.
So speaking of schedule, the program is currently 5% behind schedule, which translates to about three weeks. And there are some main reasons why that three-week shift has occurred, one of which is identifying the location for that intermediate booster pump station and acquiring access to that property so that we can perform the pedestrian survey, the environmental work, the geotechnical survey. That location also has an impact on the sizing of the pumps, the hydraulics in the pipeline, and so forth. We've had some weather affecting the geotechnical work. We've been blessed.
Have you gotten stuck in the mud?
We've been blessed with some weather that has had an impact on the drilling rigs and their ability to access the property without getting stuck or without having major property damage as a result. Access to the private properties, which I've mentioned a couple of times on the pipeline, that have impacted the geotechnical schedule, and then the access to the federal property to do the land and marine borings for the intake. Those are the main reasons why the schedule has slipped by 5%. When something like that happens, then as a program team, we have to develop a way to recover that. You know, there are some things that are non-recoverable, but in this case, I think we can recover this. And so what we've done is we've worked with your staff to develop a recovery plan that I'd like to give you just a few highlights on tonight.
Before you move the... Go back to that last one. The pedestrian survey access that we're not getting, is that like just one entity, like a tribe won't let us have access, or is it like 100 people that own property there or what?
Well, and it depends on the location. We have some property owners, farmers and ranchers, who said, "I don't want you on my property." And they said, "We're not going on their property." So we've got to work around that. And as we do, that consumes schedule. When it comes to Native American properties, you have to get a certain percentage of ownership to give you authorization. And on some of those, that requires several people. We have been in contact with all the tribes and the tribal leadership. So it's not as though we are against each other. It's just this is the process. It's their process. They're sovereign nations, and that's the way we have to approach it.
Thank you.
So just some highlights from this schedule recovery plan. Assuming weather will continue to comply, we have engaged the services of additional geotechnical field crews, and we will be doubling up the efforts. There'll be more drill rigs than were originally anticipated on the program. The project controls team has adjusted some of the critical program deliverables in order to reallocate resources from those non-critical items to those critical items. So what that means is there's two teams that are working in parallel on your program right now. One is developing what we call Design Consultant Standards Manual, which will be used in the next phase for the design consultants that will be hired to finish the design. The other team is performing the preliminary design of all the infrastructure pieces. And there's three really key components or key deliverables that you guys need to get your hands on, on time. And those are the design reports, the 30% drawings, and the updated cost opinion. And so what our team has done is we have moved the resources that are developing those Design Consultant Standards for the next phase, put that on the shelf for a little while, and reallocated them to the preliminary design, the cost opinion update, and the 30% drawings, so that we can keep those deliverable milestone dates on schedule so that you guys get what you wanted on time. The Design Consultant Standards Manual will be delayed until after the spring of 2018. That's really not critical because we don't have design consultants hired yet to use those... to use that standards manual. So that's some of the highlights of the schedule recovery plan. Very happy to report there's no impact to your cost associated with that. You're still going to get the key deliverables that are critical to you on time with no change in cost.
And what date is that, Michael?
It's a good question, Mayor. This is our overall program schedule, and you can see it's right after the first of the year when you receive the design reports, 30% drawings, and updated cost opinion for the intake, pipeline, terminal storage reservoirs, water treatment plant, and distribution system.
What's our next big outlay of money, cash?
I'll probably let Mr. Gdansky answer that one.
Okay. The next major expenditure is going to be when we start hiring design consultants to take these infrastructure pieces from 30% to 100% to include permitting. Now, those won't all happen on the same day. Once we get the updated cost opinion, my team will roll into how do we phase, what do we phase, and get a capital investment phasing plan put together to bring back to you. But we'll give you that overall cost opinion, which is going to be X number of dollars, and depending on how much information we don't have, which a lot we do have now, contingency.
Are you talking about cost information going forward?
Yes, sir. Because you'll recall that...
We've got a big loan going up through January 2018.
Yes, we do. You'll recall that when we finished Phase One, we said the probable construction cost is 360, and our engineer said we need a lot of contingency, and that turned out to be some 80 or 85. Okay? But he was building in contingency for all the things we've seen and some of the things we haven't had to see. Okay? So as we're doing that phasing, you... we will have already provided the updated cost estimate, and we'll start planning on where to go from there.
So in January, we will know what cost, plus or minus, how big a percentage?
Correct.
No, that was a question. How big a spread are we going to have?
And the answer is yes. I don't have that percentage. I won't know that percentage until I... And see, and understand, we have hit a problem. We have a 5% schedule slip. We know that it has the potential that if it continues to truly impact schedule. And so what we're doing is we're telling you, we see this problem, 5%, three weeks, and we're saying, "Hey." Because we've been through this enough to know that if we don't start now, we don't communicate now, it'll be a surprise to people, and most people don't like surprises.
I'm less concerned about the three weeks. If it takes additional months to get the number, that's fine. What I care about is how much confidence there will be in the number.
Well, I would expect it to be significantly more precise than what we gave you last night because we've learned so much. And we have extended that 10% design to 30%.
Right. Is it 30% plus or minus another 30%? At which point, we have problems.
Exactly.
But the bigger cost is for the construction of the pipeline.
That is correct.
That's $122 million.
Yes, sir.
Maybe.
Yes, sir.
Give or take a million here.
Give or take 50 million.
Give or take a couple of dollars.
It's a ton of money. It's a ton of money, but that's only a third of the $360 million.
I think we'll find constructions a little more than 100.
I think 122 is what I have in my mind.
Well, that's the pipeline.
Yes.
There's a few other things that we need to build as well.
The real takeaway is that in about four months, we'll have removed a lot of the uncertainty, at least to the 30% level or so, give or take whatever you guys tell us on that. And then I thought you were going to spend another three months working on phasing. Is that still part of it?
That is still part of the plan. And what we've done...
Two pounds of cost estimate.
To manage those costs and where they occur, to ensure that we keep those key, critical pieces of information on schedule, is we move some of that work a little bit further out. Still get it within time and on budget until we see something else happen, but that's when we'll be back. So this is how we walk through this process. As program managers and as managers of large programs and projects, this is how we do it, is as soon as we know that something's looking kind of questionable, that's when we need to start talking.
We have a lot of buildings, a lot of reservoirs, things like that, that are going to cost a lot of money to produce...
Yes, sir.
...to construct. Have we paid for any of that other than just paper design?
We're just doing design at this point. And the NEPA.
And the what?
Program management, project control, and the environmental and archaeological. And if you don't do those two, you can't do anything anyway. Nobody will give us a permit.
I just need to satisfy myself.
I understand. Okay? And I believe that's all we have. Any more questions? Any more questions?
Have you dealt with any municipalities that are wanting to buy water from us on the route?
We have not found any municipalities that are currently interested in utilizing any of this infrastructure. We have had some who have kind of hinted at wanting a piece of the intake, but they've not stepped up.
Probably a reason for that.
Probably.
Money.
Money, and you know, up until, up until we get done with this phase, it's still kind of vapor to them.
Kind of what?
Vapor. I hate to speak poorly, but you know, from their perspective, why would they go out on a limb until they know that we've got a real program?
Unless they're close to being out of water.
Correct.
And aging infrastructure.
Well, we all got some of that. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Derwin, read number four for me, please.
Where'd it go? Just got a update on the joint land use study.
Joint land use study. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. City Commissioners, City Management. We are partnering with the Office of Economic Development through the Secretary of Defense's office to prepare a joint land use study for Vance Air Force Base. And there are three components. Vance Air Force Base and their auxiliary field, Cagleman by Salt Plains, we'll be looking at that. And Vance Air Force Base also utilizes our Woodring Municipal Airport as well. So the consultant that you awarded contract will be looking at those three key components, and we'll be looking at the land use that are around the bases and around Woodring and around the auxiliary. As I've said, we've partnered with the Secretary of Defense. We are receiving a 90% grant from the federal government. We are required as a city to put in 10%, and we're going to do that through our in-kind services. We'll keep track of my department's personnel expenses. City manager will be involved to some degree. The engineering department and other technical departments within the city will have time on this project. Dan Anasor will be a great asset in this process, our director of the airport. And so I'm assured by Jason Swett, who is going to administer this for us through the Department of Economic Adjustment, that we will have no problem meeting our 10% match. We'll probably well exceed that. The total budget for the project is $225,000, so 10% of that that we are required to match would be 22.5. Are there any questions?
What are we going to do with this report?
It's going to, great question, Commissioner. It's going to identify that there are any land uses that are inappropriate for the base operations. Most of you at the table have experience with the AECU study. That's done by Vance Air Force Base. That comes to us, and we convert that into what we call our Airfields and Bayron District. And my office deals with that on a day-to-day basis. Coming right off of the end of the runway, they'll have their clear zone, and there's, like, you can't do anything there. It's not a very big area. But as planes get closer to takeoff and landing, a higher percentage of accidents can happen. So the Air Force calls that their clear zone. When you go a little bit further out from the end of the runway, it goes to accident potential zone 1, APC 1, and then there's an APC 2. And we do have some things in our APC 2. But most of, from their end to the base, is agricultural land, and that's what we would like to see it continue. Not only on the north piece that lies within the city of Enid, but when you think about the south piece of the base operations, our city limit line goes right around the base, but the effective land use goes south of there and into the county.
Well, we determined all this, though, years ago. Is this, is this revising an existing study or?
They're going to look to see if there are issues that we need to address as a community, not only as Enid. We have not done a study on Woodring, to my knowledge, and we are doing some military operations there on a, on a, on a basis. And then I don't know that there's been a study done on Cagleman.
Hey, Commissioner, just to add in on that, there hasn't been a study like this. This is a study that's recommended to have. Mike Cooper's talked to us at the last VDA meeting about possible future base alignment and closure rounds. They talked about timing, 2021, maybe 2019. This is important to identify issues, particularly protecting our airspace, and I would expect we'll get recommendations out of that, and there might be some actions we could take to improve our airspace and protection of our airspace. And I think that's one of the major purposes of this that's led us to it. And Mr. Swett is here from Washington, so I'm sure he's going to tell us that he's here to help from the nation's capital with this. And Mike Cooper will be here on the 7th, because we're going to have an item on the agenda for you to consider approval of this so we can get it started.
Well, I know, many years ago, though, we, I, I know we looked at all of these issues as far as around the base itself. I, I, I'm like Chris, I don't know whether we've ever done the evaluation of Woodring.
This, this may be-
And then, of course, Cagleman is not even anywhere in our jurisdiction, I guess, but I guess we're-
It is, Vance uses it for touches of nose and maybe more than that. So it's, that's why we've included it, because it's important to the airspace and the ability to train pilots, which is important to us here as we compete with the other pilot training bases and the needs of the Air Force. Jason Swett can probably talk, this is, this is probably a newer process. I don't know if they had this years ago when we did the APCs and all that stuff. So there's other bases that have done it. Lotton Fort Sills is going through this process right now. I don't think they've currently finished it, but I know, I noticed that they were, they were in process, so it's important to us, it's important to-
I, I know that studies are always popular and they're always expensive.
Well, this one will have whatever recommendations. I'm sure we'll want to heed those and probably see what we need to do.
The previous issue was known as AECUs.
Yeah.
Or still is AECU.
Do we have to involve the other communities like Wacomis? Do we need to get a hold of them because it's part of their land?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
And we'll also be working with the county commissioners, both here in Garfield and in Grant County where Cagleman is.
Do they have any financial responsibility in helping with budget or?
No.
No. We are going to be the program manager of the city of Enid is, and we'll coordinate on their behalf with their leadership, and all of those expenses will be a part of this program.
There will also be some state agencies that may be involved-
Yes.
Like the Aeronautics Commission, folks that have a stake in this. There's many stakeholders. You've identified a lot of them.
Mm-hmm.
And there's, part of this process will be identifying more being involved, Commissioner, to get the best result we can out of the study.
Do you get many requests for construction in these areas or different individuals wanting to buy the property that's within the restricted areas?
No. No, we haven't had anything like that at this time.
How long has that been in existence, Chris?
The AED, I, I'm going to, I, I think about 30 years, Mayor.
30?
Yes.
It was discussed back in the 80s, I know.
I, I remember an AECU that was dated in, you know, 86, and then about every six years, the base will refresh those, or the military will refresh those. So I think Commissioner Janson's correct. It was in the 80s, and I came into dealing with it on a regular basis in the 90s.
Is it still called AECUs?
The military calls theirs AECUs. We call ours, when we codify it and it becomes the law, that we administer, it's called Airfields and Bayron District, AED.
You threw me a curveball a while ago.
I didn't mean to. I'm here to be clear. Now, the base does its AECUs, they give that to us in the form of recommendations, then you, as the city commission, will turn that into an ordinance form, and the ordinance is called the Airfield and Bayron's District.
Okay.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Jay Swett is here. Jay, you want to offer any thoughts that myself or Gerald has not included?
I think you've done a great job.
Please do. He'll pick up the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity to come back to Enid. I'm your project manager on this. I've done about 20 of these. The joint land use study program is a great planning tool for looking both inside the fence and outside the fence, moving forward, adjusting to economics, adjusting to population changes, economic development, zoning, wind turbines, airspace. So this thing is going to cover a lot of these issues, again, from both the Vance side of it and the community side of it. And I'm going to be your project manager and help you shepherd this through until the end. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them for you.
What was the timeframe on this study?
I believe this is 18 months.
I'll answer that one.
Sure.
Thank you, Jay. Good question. That takes us to the second part of the presentation. We, city of Enid staff, did a request for proposal, and we got back four proposals, and there they are. KSA, Matrix, let's see, we have White &amp; White on the far, and then StanTech. And we went through a lengthy process that was in the RFP. We had five people that were on the consultant selection committee. They each evaluated all four, and the results came back. They waited, was, as you can see, and the firm that received the highest number was Matrix Design. My next slide starts to ask, answer the question about cost and timeframe. I could only get two firms per slide, so there'll be two slides. KSA, they came in at 64 in their overall, and they were a 12-month project at $260,000. Remember, my budget's 225. Matrix came in, they're at 18 months at 201. They scored the highest, 81 and 1/2. StanTech was the lowest at 195, 516 months, and then White &amp; White was at 218 at 12. So it was somewhere between 12 and 18 months, depending on which consultant was doing it. The committee is recommending to you is Matrix. That's how that process was done. These were the areas of how they were evaluated. How many joint land uses have you done in the last five years? And how many land use studies have you done? Their management team, their personnel, their experience, as well as cost and schedule. Those were the criteria. Each person evaluated those individually. They brought them back to me, and I put everybody together and came up with the totals. So it's our recommendation that you enter a contract with Matrix to perform the land use study. And if that's the will of the commission, then I think our strategy as staff is to bring that back to you September 7th for execution.
Okay. StanTech was about $50,000 less in two months' less time?
No, I think it was more like 6,000 less.
Okay.
Let me back up, Commissioner. And right here, 195, and they-
Oh, okay.
They're a couple of months less.
Okay.
And then Matrix was the 201, so about 6,000.
Okay.
Not quite, and about two months longer.
All right.
But just to give you the, the land uses that they have done, they have done one for Shepherd Air Force Base, Maxwell Air Force Base, Stone Ranch, Ellsworth, Virginia, Columbus Air Force Base. Those are the ones that they have completed. The very thing that we're seeking them to do for us. They have a lot of experience.
Have we reached out to any of those bases to find out if they were happy with the results?
I have not.
We can certainly do that between now and the 9/7 meeting-
Sharing that to you.
Yeah. Our findings.
I can do that.
Colonel Judy Surratt, do you have anything to say about this? This is important to the Air Force.
Yeah, no, appreciate the support. I think it's a good, good way to comprehensively look at land use for its compatible encroachment, right? Because that's, that's the competing resource here, so they're very valuable. I have no, I have no awareness of those other bases about their, their satisfaction with who participated in that study or their, their details of the study. But you know, this is a dedicated process. I think it will serve both communities very well, having someone do a comprehensive study with this stuff. It's been my experience that these are usually beneficial for both parties. We appreciate the support.
That's all of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Out of five, discuss mobile food truck ordinance.
Yeah, next, we're going to talk about other mobile food truck ordinance. And I think Commissioner Wilson had asked about making some changes. Carol had drafted up some changes, and we had visited as staff had, select staff had gotten together and visited about that. So I think we're going to pull that up in just a moment.
You want to say slide, don't you? You just want to say slide.
Carol? If you go to the agenda, I think it's linked.
Simple.
And Commissioner Wilson, did you want to lead in on this before Carol talks about the proposed changes?
Well, the impetus of it was that I've had a couple of different food truck proprietors contact me. I don't know if Main Streets had the same experience or not, but we're probably, I mean, primarily who deals with food truck vendors in town, just different events and things like that. And there seemed to be kind of a consensus among some of them that it was hard, it was kind of complicated to get a permit when it really didn't need to be. And so we were just trying to make the permitting process a little bit easier for the people with the food trucks. Because sometimes it was taking, it seemed kind of an enormous amount of time to receive a permit to sell food in our town.
That was the original intent.
Yeah, the original intent was to make it easy, and it wasn't easy. And you know, when you think about what the nature of a food truck is, basically that it's just a, I mean, it's a restaurant on wheels, and we're not requiring any of those same kind of things from other restaurants in town. I get, because of the mobile nature of it, because of being on different property or the different, maybe kind of different interactions, but that we may have some different requirements, but I didn't think it needed to be as complicated as it was.
I think we've made some significant changes. Carol, do you want to talk about those? And then you guys can tell us, give us your feedback.
Who issues the permit?
The food truck vendor is, gets a permit.
The city clerk's office issues the permit.
Oh, the LA issue, yeah, clerk's office.
Well, we talked with the police department, code, and, and the city clerk. And one thing that we did was, it originally, and there's nothing wrong with the ordinance as it is now, but we're talking about mobile food vendors. So we made a change so that the licenses for each mobile unit rather than for each location. So they basically permit their mobile unit, and then they can go to different locations. And if a particular location becomes a problem, the code administrator would call them and say, you know, "Let's adjust that location." But it's, it's pri, it's, it's based on the mobile unit, not, they're not going to have to come in and get a separate license for every single place they're going to move their unit. Okay. Then you'll notice, we were requiring everyone to have a background check. But what we, when we talked with the police department, what we've done is we've shifted that from every single person and to only the ones that cater to children and are going through the neighborhoods. So the, and the thought with that is that if they're going through the neighborhoods, the parents may not be home, you know, and what we're really talking about is just an ice cream truck with like the little music. So they will need to get a background check, but the ones that are not going in the neighborhoods and are just going to commercial places and are really just handing the food out, we figured the parents can, you know, will have control over the very small children, because how are they going to get there? And it's not like anyone is going to get into a fairly small food court, cart or mobile unit.
And that's the same rules for a normal restaurant?
Exactly. We don't worry about it.
I'm a little confused. How would you police that if they're mobile?
Well, I think just the general nature of it. I mean, barbecue trucks don't generally drive down the street and yell out the window, whereas the difference is like an ice cream truck drives through the neighborhoods and-
Sure.
I mean, it's, I think it's mostly the nature of the kind of-
I guess my question is, man, how would, how would you enforce it?
For residential neighborhoods.
Oh, yeah.
If the truck goes into residential neighborhoods, doesn't matter what they sell, they should have that. So I don't, we have to have it on the application or something.
And if you look through the ordinance, you'll note, keep going, that the only ones that actually go through the neighborhood ringing a bell and having curb service are the prepackaged food- are the prepackaged food vendors, and the only one we have is ice cream trucks. So, how we would, you know, they're, they're not, barbecue trucks are not supposed to be going into, you know, a barbecue truck where they're making the food right there isn't allowed in, in the neighborhoods. These mobile food sales, which are the food trucks, they're authorized on private property in commercial and industrial zones. The ordinance only provides for the people going through the neighborhoods ringing the bell for prepackaged foods, which is the ice cream.
What about some of these meat salesmen that come around every once in a while? Somebody's come by my house selling meat?
That falls under the door-to-door peddler guy, doesn't it? Doesn't that fall under like the solicitation?
How would you deem so?
Some of them might, what we...
That's a different thing.
If it's meat, you know, packaged swan, packaged meat thing, that's not luring small, I mean, I think they ring the doorbell, and they don't, aren't luring children to the cart.
It's also food not ready to eat, family, with asking preparation.
Okay.
And then everyone out to the swan truck.
No, we did, now, what we did do at the suggestion of the code administrator was, there are different rules for seasonal food than for mobile. And so we have two types of seasonal food, primarily, well, three, if you count the food, the farmer's markets. You've got your farmer's market, you've got your food and vegetables, and your, your snow cones. And so we've put those separate, since they're not really mobile, and they have their own rules. And those rules haven't changed. Okay. Is there any other change? Yes. Okay, the other change was, we, we are only requiring like the plat for the snow cones and the, the vegetables. We also add, there's an exemption from sales tax for people that sell food and vegetables at their farm site. I don't know if we have any of those, but we put that in. So they don't have to have a, a Department of Health certification or permit, and they also don't have to have sales tax. It's, because we're all farming states, so we've got that in there. And then finally, right here, is the last change, what we're suggesting, so we made it easier for the food cart, food, in, the mobile people to work with code, to get different types of locations, and if the location becomes a problem, code will talk to them and they can maybe alter the site. And it, we used to say, not later than 30 days after the filing of a completed application. That was primarily because everyone, including the officers, if these food courts were a big corporation, which most of them aren't, everyone had to be, have their, their background checked. Now, what we're thinking is, because we've limited it to those catering in neighborhoods to children, that we can do it quicker, and we're also putting in a little prompt that if they are doing it for a particular event and time is short, that they should send their applications to the administrator first, so that by the time they get there, some of the processing, processing has been completed. So what we're hoping is that most of the time, they could show up and get their permit while they wait.
Yeah, because sometimes what kind of what was happening is, say, a food truck gets invited to an event, and then they would go to get their permit, and it was taking so long to get their permit that they would miss the event. And so, that was kind of becoming problematic, because you don't, they don't always have 30 days. I mean, sometimes something pops up, and they may be from another town, and they get invited to come to town or something, and 30 days just seemed like an inordinate amount of time to get a $10 food truck permit to go sell for three hours at the park or something. So we were trying to just make it not quite so complicated.
Are the vendors that have multiple trucks?
Um, there are probably a few that have more than one, but mostly they usually just have one.
The ice cream truck.
The ice cream truck has more than one.
How will this affect Tri-State?
It shouldn't, it should make it easy.
They probably have the most food trucks.
Hmm, I don't know. We have about 20 at the food truck festival.
At one event.
Yeah, we usually have 20 at the food truck festival. I don't know if Tri-State has that many or not, but, but each one of those has to have a permit, and so, in every Main Street, one has to have a permit, and every time there's anything, they have to have a permit. But, and so we have the one-day permit, the six-month permit, and the year permit. So most of the ones that are around town all the time get it for a year.
It may not have anything to do with what you're working on, but who monitors the sales tax?
The state.
The state?
They have to do it just like any other small business.
I saw that in the ordinance.
Yeah, if any, it's just like any other small business, they have to report to the Oklahoma Tax Commission.
And order to buy the...
And they have to pay their taxes, just like any other small business would.
You mentioned that, that you thought Main Street was operating on the 100-feet rule, and we, and I didn't change it to 150, it's always been 150. It, do we need to, would it be better if we, since we're changing it now, should we change it to 100? Does anyone have problems with changing it to 100?
I don't know what the local businesses think.
Well, most of the local businesses, the only time...
I mean, that's the one that's going to be affected.
Right, and most of the time, really, it's only matters for like things like First Friday and downtown stuff, and I think most of them kind of expect them to be there for those things. And a lot of them set up outside stuff, anyway.
Is there a problem? 150 feet, it means a half a block.
Well, 150, yeah, half a block makes a big difference for like a First Friday type of thing.
100 feet is a third of a block.
Which just means you have to have a lot of people, there's a lot of people and a lot of stuff squeezed in a pretty tight area down there. And I know that there have been events where, for instance, Callahan's will, for their Oktoberfest, you know, they do a bunch of stuff out in front of the bar, and there have been food trucks in that parking lot behind the gas light, there have been food trucks in the block right there, that are certainly within 150 feet. But I don't think it is in anyone's interest, including Callahan's or Panavino or Sidewalk or anybody right there, to discourage that. I think they want people in their area. So it seems rational to encourage higher density locating, rather than forcing everybody to spread to the wind.
Kelly would probably know. Have you received any kind of complaints, or you think that...
You know, when, at the beginning, there was grumbling from restaurant owners, and then, and then they've come back to me and said, you know, I get it now, but the food truck to bring more people to the district, and, and as a whole, they end up with poor business. I have not heard anything negative in a couple of years.
So you think 100 feet needs to be the norm?
I, that is, I was looking at that on Google Maps today, and that is, that's approximately what we do. We would have a hard time finding a spot if it followed the 150-foot rule, but we do, out of courtesy, not to head it right in front of the business, so that is approximately how far we set them. We're also careful to not put a topo truck up in front of an Emilio's restaurant. We're not going to do that. You know, we, they mostly have told me they don't want the same type of food right in front of their business. Other than that, they know it brings more people to the food as a whole.
Mr. Gilbert had talked about the concern about city authorized concession stands, and number five, and Mr. Gilbert, when I read it, it indicates that they're not to sell within 150 feet of a public park. So unless you, and it also provides for authorization and writing by the city. So I think that gives you enough protection, because the 150 feet is from the public park, and I doubt the concession stand is, except for maybe the concession stand involving at Meadow Lake with the, the little...
Government spring, something.
Little putt-putt, that's it. They're usually not right at, you know, usually there's a parking lot between...
I think 150 feet's fine there.
Or 100? And that doesn't count for like special event stuff when you have food trucks at the park, I'm assuming?
Right, because I think it talks about in here, a distance from public property or a distance from another special event, somewhere I saw that.
Because there are a lot of events happen, like government springs where they bring food trucks to the event.
Yeah, and, and all of these...
We're like 4th of July, we had them at Meadow Lake.
And car shows, and a lot of car shows.
But they'd be permitted, so they would be able to encroach there.
Exactly. The special event allows them to be infected specifically for events.
Right, right. And all of these say that they can get permission. So, you know, for instance, if the school wants to have the vendor there because it's a special day, then they've got permission.
They just can't go on their own and go park there without permission.
Yeah.
We can always go with 100 feet and change it later if you have to.
Well, and they have to have permission to be parked on the city street anyway, regardless of where they are, so. So it all sound okay to you, Kelly? Does it sound good?
I can totally work with that.
Okay. So I guess that's the only other change, then it's just the 150 to 100. We'll, we'll bring it back with us.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Everybody else is good with it?
I'm easy.
Anything else on item 5? If not, we are adjourned, meet upstairs at 6:30. Thank you for joining us for the Enid City Commission Study Session. If you have any questions or comments, visit our website at enid.org.